And welcome to the April 21 City Council Work Session. Today, we have a continuance of our discussion on Eugene Comprehensive Land Assessment Project. And how many meetings is this that we work our way along? More than three.
Many.
Many. Anyway, I'll turn this over to you, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll just turn it over to Lisa Gardner.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. In late 2009, you accepted the draft land need associated with the Eugene Comprehensive Lands Assessment and directed staff to work with the Community Advisory Committee to resolve several outstanding issues. Today, we'll be providing to you the results of that process and the final land need emerging from the ECLAP process for your consideration. For over two years, staff have worked with a dedicated group of community members to review important data and to bring forward a recommendation in support of ECLAP. And if I could, I just want to recognize there are several members of the Community Advisory Committee in the audience, and if you'd indulge me in stand-up, I'd like to recognize your hard work. There's a couple over here.
Stand up.
And a couple back. So I just want to acknowledge their hard work.
Thank you.
And our presentation today will be summarizing this information as well as the consensus recommendation from the committee in support of the Eugene Comprehensive Lands Assessment. As a result of our work, we feel that we are well-positioned for the Envision Eugene process and have a solid foundation of data to work from in the coming months. Just as an informational item, residents across the entire city will be receiving a postcard in the mailboxes this week to kick off the Envision Eugene process, including upcoming workshop dates, and we'll be back in front of the council in the coming months to talk more about that process. So I'd like to turn it over to Jason Dedrick.
Thanks, Lisa. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Jason Dedrick with the Planning Division, here to provide you with the final results emerging from ECLAP. So I have a brief presentation today for you. In that presentation, I will review our process over the last few months since we were last here in a substantial way in December, and then also review the data coming out of ECLAP as well as kind of hint at the interplay between that data, the ECLAP process, and the Envision Eugene process to help provide that link. So that's kind of where we're heading with this discussion. The last time that we were here was in February. It was very brief and was mostly centered around preparing for Envision Eugene. There was a brief update on ECLAP. As I mentioned, we were here at more length in December of last year where you adopted a resolution accepting the draft land need of ECLAP and directed staff to work with our committee on the outstanding issues that the committee members had identified and to report back in April with the results of that. And so that's what brings us here today. And I'm ready for the slides now. We can do the slides. So throughout this process, we have been working very hard, as Lisa mentioned, with a dedicated group of committee members. And I wanted to describe to you the work that they have undertaken over that period of time and the results of their last meeting last week. So the group was originally convened to help kind of vet the data coming out of ECLAP to make sure that our assumptions, the methodology, the data were ground-truthed with folks who know these issues and who work in the community on these issues. So the committee was formed with that intent. As we moved along in the process, it became clear that it would be an important feature to perhaps have a recommendation from the committee on the final results of ECLAP, and that is indeed what we have to bring to you today. So at our final meeting of that committee, which was last Tuesday, the 13th, eight of our 12 active members were present and agreed on a consensus vote to support ECLAP, and I'll review what the recommendation was here in a minute, the details of that. The way that we voted on that was in kind of true consensus fashion, a thumbs up, a "I'm okay, I can move forward," or a thumbs down. And for everyone that was in attendance, we had a thumbs up on the recommendation. And also, I think what's inherent in a consensus decision, in any consensus decision, is the acknowledgement that there may be issues or concepts that folks might not be completely there on, but that for the spirit of the group and of the project moving forward, you're able to understand where those things belong and really wanting to see the group move forward. And I think that is the spirit, and not everybody would say, "Yes, this is 100 percent, just the way I want it," but I think that's not necessarily how consensus always works. So the list that you have here in the larger type are the 12 active members of the group. You can see we had a few former members who, due to other commitments, did not remain with the group until the end, and then we did have a planning commission liaison that was a non-voting member, and that was Rick Duncan. So all of the members here highlighted in yellow signed the -- voted, either eight of those folks were present at the meeting, three others signed the statement that you have with you supporting that, and one member has not, and that's Kevin. And the reason I mention that is that he missed our last meeting because he was in Europe, and because of the ash problems there, my knowledge, he remains in Europe.
Go Volcano.
So I have tried to contact him since that meeting, and he has received these materials. So I can say that I and other staff, as part of ECLAP and Envision Eugene, met with him frequently in the weeks running up to his departure and felt good that we had heard the issues that were of importance to him. I can't speak directly to his opinion on the actual verbiage of the recommendation, but so anyway. So that is, you know, I think, a strong statement from the committee in support of the results emerging from ECLAP. And so I'll review their recommendation coming forward because it's important. So one of their findings, and this is their understanding of ECLAP, and I think it'll help you understand it. "The baseline assessment provides a reasonable estimate of Eugene's land need in acres if there were no changes to assumptions, policies, or program areas that would affect the need for residential or employment lands." And so that more or less states that we've determined our land need, given our current policies and the trends that we're on as a city. The second piece of their findings, which was also important, was noting that the baseline assumptions, which are in Appendix A of the Assumptions Memorandum that's in your packet, and I'll show you those assumptions briefly in a few minutes, represent a mixture of forecasts, the continuation of development trends, and adopted policies. And then moving on to their recommendation, accept the results of ECLAP for use in the Envision Eugene process. And again, that was a consensus vote of everyone who's active on the committee, save the one that I mentioned. Also, part of their recommendation was an acknowledgement that there are some issues that have a better place in terms of being addressed in the Envision Eugene process than in the ECLAP process, and that's primarily because ECLAP was dealing with our current policies. And several issues have come up over the last couple of years around, how could our policies potentially be different? And so the committee wanted to be sure that their comments on those issues were carried forward into the Envision Eugene process. So I'm going to briefly cover a few of those. Nodal development, or our mixed-use center strategy, the committee wanted to be sure that this was an issue that got addressed in terms of code our policies around mixed-use development or nodal development, as it's referred to in TransPlan, be any different than they are currently. And if they were to be different, how might that impact our land need? So that's a consideration for Envision Eugene. Plan designations, there's a specific recommendation from the committee that, around the fact that there are certain tax lots in the city that do not have a specific plan designation, a tax lot-specific plan designation, and their recommendation that that issue be addressed by the time that we move forward on our urban growth boundary next year. Thirdly, on wetlands, primarily the issue here is their desire to put forward the issue of, do we want to take a look at our wetlands protections? Do we want to look as a community at protecting wetlands above and beyond the current protections that we afford, either through Goal V or the West Eugene Wetlands Plan? Market trends, this is an issue that came up towards the end of our process and is inherent in our process in that we have said, this is our land need based on current and recent trends. And the acknowledgement that the Envision Eugene process should consider, what if those trends would be different? What might we learn about what's happening with the market that we should account for in our land need and that that be addressed in Envision Eugene? And then lastly, housing affordability, this is an issue for which ECLAP has provided data on. The city's consolidated plan also provides data on this. It lets us know what our affordability gap is in the community and how we might deal with that from a policy standpoint in the Envision Eugene project. So how we think about the land that we need and the impact it might have on affordability. So these are all issues that, because of their policy implications, are best considered in the Envision Eugene process as opposed to, they're not issues that we didn't get to in ECLAP, they're ones that have a better fit in Envision Eugene. So there were 13 outstanding issues that we discussed late last year, and kind of the snapshot of those issues and the review of that, we had small groups made up of committee members who met frequently, either in person, or I worked with them via phone or email conversation, on those issues to bring those to resolution. And the product of that work was, there has been actually little change to the data that we originally presented in December. It doesn't mean that the work didn't have value. We actually surfaced a lot of policy issues that lay the foundation for Envision Eugene, but it also, I think, gave the committee an opportunity to feel comfortable with the data that was going forward. So each of those small groups agreed to a consensus statement that is in your packet in Attachment B. Those statements talk about some of the things that they discussed. They also talk about some specific recommendations to go forward into Envision Eugene. I want to talk about a few of those. There was one significant change to the data from December, and that was to our parkland need. And essentially, that was a result of a change in the methodology for calculating that need. Previously, we had based our parkland need on the Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan, the PROS Plan, which talks about theoretical guidelines for acres per thousand people of parks. Through discussion with the small group and kind of staff thinking about this, it seemed more appropriate to base our parkland need on the project and priority plan. This is a very specific list that was put together, the community had a lot of input on, on the actual parks that the city would intend to acquire or develop. And the interesting thing about that plan is that it plans for almost the exact same population that the ECLAP process plans for. So not only does it tie our parkland need more specifically to geography and the community's needs, given that process, but it plans for the appropriate population as well. And so that is a better reflection of our parkland need going forward and resulted in a change to the acreage needed. It still results in 160 acres of parkland needed inside the UGB, which is still a significant amount. One of the other issues I want to briefly mention, in terms of a consensus statement, revolves around drainage ways, the 25-year floodplain. These fit under the umbrella of stormwater issues. And while the small group agreed on the issue of drainage ways in that these are areas that are not currently, development is not currently prohibited in these areas, however, Public Works is currently considering potential revisions to that that may result in further protections. And like any other policy that might occur either prior to Envision Eugene completing or in two years, any policy that might change our land need, we'll need to account for that and make findings as to how that impacts our land need. And the same on the 25-year floodplain. This was the one piece of all of those outstanding issues that the subgroup did not reach consensus on whether or not those areas are developable, but we're comfortable with the notion that we can continue to explore that and have our attorneys look at that and talk about the implications of that in Envision Eugene. There was an acknowledgement that this is a very small area of the city, is a very small acreage, but there was the recognition that it's an important issue that we should make sure we address. And lastly, I want to touch quickly on residential redevelopment. This is something the committee spent a lot of time on last year, multiple meetings working through that. There was concern about the methodology and the data around that issue. And so a lot of work was done by staff, by the committee members on this. We talked to our consultant, talked to some economists who were not affiliated with our consultant. We even traveled to Portland to meet with Portland and Metro staff, who have some pretty innovative approaches to residential redevelopment, and took one of our committee members, Paul Conti, with us to talk about that. The end result of this work is the acknowledgement that the current methodology is sufficient for the purposes of ECLAP and that we can continue to use that as the basis for Envision Eugene going forward. So now I'll shift into talking about the results emerging from ECLAP. The first thing I'm going to show you is a table that I don't expect you to read, although it is showing up fairly large here. This is the table of all of the key assumptions in ECLAP, and we presented this multiple times last year. The important thing that I want to show to you about this is that it remains virtually unchanged from what we showed at the end of last year, with the exception of parks. And so these foundational elements, which you've spent some time reviewing and which we've talked about, remain primarily unchanged, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time on those. So I'm going to walk through the key areas of our land need, starting with residential. This really starts with our population forecast, which has been adopted and says that we'll have 34,000 new people. Those people will need, based on household size, various other factors, about 15,000 new dwelling units. Our vacant lands and redevelopment will account for some of those dwelling units. However, just short of 5,000 of those dwelling units will need some type of new land that exceeds what we have available. And so what that means in terms of acres is that for low-density residential land, we would need just over 1,200 acres and smaller amounts of medium-density and high-density residential. Obviously, low-density residential takes up a big component of that, and that is because in the past and currently, a larger percentage of our housing stock is in single-family housing as opposed to multifamily housing. These numbers include our parkland and our public land need. So public facilities or our parks, we know typically locate on low-density residential land, and so these numbers account for the fact that we will need those lands to meet those needs. So shifting over to employment land need, we know that we'll need to provide about 32,000 new jobs over the next 20 years. We currently have about 100 acres of vacant commercial land, which isn't that much and actually squared up with what several of our committee members had shared coming into the process, that it didn't seem like there was a lot of commercial land available. We do have more industrial land available, though. And so what that means in terms of our land need is that going forward, we would need around 388 acres of land to meet our commercial land need. However, at this point in time, we do not show a need for industrial land, and I'm going to talk about that a little bit on the next slide because it's a pretty important concept. What we're saying when we say we don't have a need at the current moment is that when we look at the number of jobs we need to locate on industrial land and the amount of vacant industrial land that we have, just from a raw acreage standpoint, we have what we need. However, when you think about this from kind of a more pragmatic standpoint about what those lands look like, it becomes clear that our land need may change. So if you had 100-acre land need for industrial land, and you had 100 acres available, and it was all in five-acre parcels, that would be different than if you had 100 acres available, but it was all in 25-acre parcels. We are a little more in the situation on the left. While we have a lot of industrial land, we don't have very many large tax lots that are industrial land. And so what that means is that Envision Eugene will need to consider the Regional Economic Development Plan that you've been working on as part of the Joint-Elected Officials, which talks about some specific key industries that we want to target in the future, like advanced manufacturing, software, clean technology, and really looking at those industries and saying, what site needs would they have? Do they need a certain size of a lot? Does it need to be located near railroad tracks or away from railroad tracks? That needs to happen directly after ECLAP completes and at the front end of the Envision Eugene process. We'll start working with that plan to understand what our needs may be. So this may impact our overall industrial land need, even though we don't currently have a need at the moment. So when you add this all up, here are the numbers for residential, and again, those include the parkland need, commercial at 388, industrial at zero for now, I guess would be the caveat, just under 1,800 acres of land needed. And again, I want to reiterate that that is our need based on our current policies and recent trends that we have seen. Any changes to our policies or things we may do to use land more efficiently may reduce this number, or, on the other hand, the industrial land need that we talked about may change this number, could potentially increase. And to get a look at how that relates to the numbers we were considering at the end of last year, you will remember that you accepted a range of between 1,500 and 3,000 acres. The data as of late last year were pointing right at the middle of that range. That number is now 1,798 acres. That entire difference is almost accounted for entirely by the parkland need and the change in the methodology there. So what does that look like? What does 1,800 acres look like? So there on the left is the land in our current urban growth boundary, 34,500 acres. 1,800 acres is about 5% of the land currently inside the UGB. So that gives you a sense of the scale of acreage that we're talking about. And here's just a quick look again at how that's distributed. I think that's about, just short of, like, I think around 70% of our need is low-density residential with smaller amounts in the other land types. So when we talk about what ECLAP means for Envision Eugene, it's important to note that the data and the results coming out of ECLAP serve as the basis for Envision Eugene. They're a foundation, they help inform what we'll talk about with the community, and will help the community understand where we've been going in terms of land use and what that means for the future. What it does not mean at this point is that it does not trigger an immediate expansion of our UGB. There are other steps that need to occur. Chief among those is the state process that they require us to look at how we could use our land more efficiently. And that's one of the key components of Envision Eugene. How might we change our policies to more efficiently use land? So Envision Eugene will consider that in the context of a larger community dialogue, changes to policies to use land more efficiently, and changes in market trends that may or may not need a policy change. And that's it.
Great job, Jason. Thank you very much. Very clear. Really good. I've got Mike in the queue. Anybody else right now? Okay, Mike?
I'm going to probably need a couple of rounds. I have four major points. I'll try and not take four rounds. First of all, a question, and actually, before that, I know how much work that everybody's done on this, and I really appreciate the hard work on multiple departments and multiple community members to try to get this as good as we possibly can. It's been a Herculean effort, and good job. The 32,000 jobs that we want to create that are a part of the assumption base, what's the unemployment rate that's assumed in that number?
There are a couple of things not directly employment rate. So there's the employment forecast for how many jobs, what job growth we'll see over that period. Unemployment is really factored in there from the standpoint of, which we did last year in response to the current kind of economic climate, was to say, we know we're going to locate some of those jobs in current buildings. And so while that number may have been lower in a different economic climate, we actually utilized a higher number there. I can't remember off the top of my head what it was, but we said, in response to the current market, we know that we'll locate more jobs than usual in existing built space. And so that's how unemployment was accounted for in terms of our job need, that some of those jobs aren't going to need new land and that they're going to go into, they're going to fill back in jobs that we lost over the last couple of years.
I would have just the opposite assumption to say that if we're going to try to create enough new jobs in order to try to make headway on our unusually high unemployment rate, my assumption would be that we'd need to be more ready to do so, especially as it pertains to the parcel size that you were mentioning. I would think that if we wanted to have, for example, a solar manufacturer in our community, that's going to take a chunk of land that is not available in the Eugene area, and so we're going to have to take that into account. So that's an assumption that I wanted to make a comment on. But there are four parts of this that I want to talk about. First, that concerned me a great deal, and I don't know how to, I want to vote for the resolution and push this forward, but I want to make sure that we're addressing these appropriately in the ECLAP, in the Envision Eugene process, and I don't know how to enshrine that appropriately into this particular motion that's been updated here, and I could probably use Emily's help along the way, I think. The first issue is drainage. Well, let's start with parks. We have no acknowledged refinement plan for parks, and we're obligated to, right?
I don't know if that's entirely clear. I think there may be an obligation per the metro plan to have our parkland need expressed in that way. But what we have heard from the state is that our project and priority plan is a sufficient means to base our parkland need on.
Can you say you've heard from the state? Can you amplify that?
Sure. In consultation with Ed Moore, who's the regional representative with DLCD, we were asking, is it appropriate to use our PROS Plan or our project and priority plan as the basis to establish our parkland need? And their response was yes. That's a reasonable means or mechanism for a community to assess their parkland need.
Do we envision having a formal refinement plan in advance of adoption of the final number in February?
I don't know. It's not something I can speak conclusively to.
I'm not aware that there's any plans to do that.
Okay.
I believe it was a recommendation coming out of the small group on parks that we examine whether or not we need a more formal, formally-adopted parks plan. That was something that the group was concerned about and wanted to make sure got carried forward as an issue to consider.
There was no timeline with the remand that was sent back to us that says we need to do it differently?
Emily's saying no.
When the City Council adopted an update to the metro plan in 2004, there was an inclusion in that update that said we needed a local refinement plan for parks. So the requirement comes only from our own plan. You have options. That provision could be removed. You have control over that. We could adopt a refinement plan, and no, there's no requirement as to when that would happen, but for purposes of your action through ECLAP, and I believe through Envision Eugene, you don't need that because we have very reliable data already.
The two that are of larger concern to me are drainage ways and transportation, specifically drainage ways. Now, it was the very sole point of all the conversations we had around MYCAP, point number eight, that we put the Stormwater Manual into the code. That was kind of a lengthy discussion that we had, as I recall, about that. And I can tell you that the people in Santa Clara that I get to represent are very serious about making sure that we protect natural drainage ways in Santa Clara. We put that into the code on purpose in order to say, the natural drainage ways that exist there, we want Public Works to fill out that administrative rule so that we're being exceptionally clear about our definition, and there is a definition in that manual of what a drainage way is. And we're being clear about what they are so that we protect them and don't develop over them. That's the whole point of the administrative rules that are being developed. And what I'm reading here from Attachment B says that essentially, they're all developable. Now, I have some concern with that as an assumption because I think if we're going to protect drainage ways, we should be saying at this point, I guess I'm going to need another round, so I'd love to hear you address that first.
Sure. I think that the important part of the drainage ways piece right now is that the information coming out of MYCAP, the direction was to do that. And my understanding is that that is a process that Public Works staff are in the process of doing now, that the actual language surrounding how to specifically define drainage ways, to map them, and to say specifically what the protections would be, hasn't been completed yet. At the time that that is completed, whether it's during Envision Eugene or after, we will have to make findings that say, how much land does that affect, and how much land does that impact in terms of our current supply? And so if that happens before Envision Eugene, we will need to deduct land, and if that protects land, says it's unbuildable, we will have to remove those lands from the buildable lands inventory to account for that. If it happens after Envision Eugene finishes, we'd have to do the same thing. So it's just a matter of timing. I think the important point is that, given our current policies, we have not yet written the enacting language for that piece coming out of MYCAP yet. So as soon as we do, we will account for that.
Thanks, Jason. I have a couple, kind of, and maybe you've answered these in the past, and if you have, I apologize, but I'm going to ask them anyway. How do we account for trends about people leaving the community as opposed to our expected additions of people coming?
The population forecast that Portland State University did for Lain County took into effect kind of a multitude of demographic factors that ended up leading to the number of people we expect by 2030 or 2031. So that accounted for in-migration, out-migration, changes to, you know, all kinds of different demographic factors. So they're included inherent in that forecast.
Yeah.
Yes.
The net gain.
Correct.
What made me think about that, as you go through these difficult employment times and all of that, you think about, there are times when things look really good for employment and people move in, and times when it doesn't look so good, and people tend to go somewhere else where it looks better. So I don't, I guess that's part of the consideration, but. The other factor, and I do remember you talking about this before, but I need a refresher on it, is there is a shift as the aging population to higher-density living. Is that taken into account in this? Because you're, as we look at the different expectations for density of housing, I think we all think we're going to see a trend for higher-density housing, but that may not be what we have seen. what we have seen.
We certainly spent time talking in the committee about where we are in terms of density and housing-type choices. And one of the difficult things that our consultants pointed out to us is that we may be at a turning point, kind of moment. We may not be. We'll find out 10 years from now. But we may be at a moment in time when demographics and housing needs and environmental concerns are shifting such that we really could turn, you know, not just Eugene, but all communities in terms of that issue that you mentioned. And so, it made it very hard to speculatively say, we know for sure that that will change. Now, what we will do as part of Envision Eugene is consider the community preferences for different housing types, for different densities, and that will be a part of how we may meet our land need differently. And so, while it's certainly an issue that we talked about, the committee didn't feel comfortable, and our consultants didn't feel comfortable recommending a significant shift in housing type or density based on those trends, even though they may be pointing in that way, it's more difficult to know at this point in time.
I don't know if the recession, how it's affected that, but I do know that a couple of years ago, when we had the Moving Forward Together Summit, and we had some of the national folks on trends, all the information at that time was about less low-density housing and all about more higher-density housing. And I don't know if that's still what everybody expects, even if we're not sure what's going to happen to us. Certainly, we have to be affected by the people who examine those as national trends. So, I guess that'll come up in our work on Envision and all of that. The other question I just wanted to bring up, too, is the, I'm sure you talked about this, is as we look out there in our community, we have questions about where we have industrial land designated. Is that the place it should be designated in the future, or are there better uses for the land that we currently have designated that way, which could affect everything you're talking about here?
Right. Yeah. Part of how we may address some of our land need is to look at the current designations for the land that we have. And so, one of the considerations may be that we have more industrial land than we currently show a need for, and we obviously have a need for commercial land. And so, one thing that a city might consider in a situation like that, and that other cities have considered, is changing designations, the future of what those lands may be. So, that is an efficiency measure, one of those, how do you use land more efficiently, that the state has identified as a good example of something a community might consider as part of that.
And while we have to look at it from both best land use and tax base, I still think in the regional discussion, there's kind of looking across our whole region, where's the best place for industrial growth, and there are trade-offs on that. But that's certainly a broader discussion than just how much we want in our community. Okay. And then, just one little remark, Mike. I just wanted to say to you that I think we do have a solar place for a solar facility. If you know of one that needs to be located, let me know.
Thanks, Mary.
That's right.
Keep you updated.
Okay, please. Chris?
Just quickly, I appreciate these as baseline figures, and I think everybody's kind of in the spirit of saying these are baseline figures that will then be further refined or considered under the Envision Eugene process, which I think is great because if I knew I needed a car, and I could choose between five different cars, I'd want to look at them before I decide which one I want. Because I may want a red one, or I may want a blue one, or I may want one that's big or one that's small, or one, and I think that's what Envision Eugene is really all about, is you can, you need a car, but which one do you want? And I think the number of acres we need is really a function of what it is we want to have. We all recall the neighborhood character conversations that we've been having on a regular basis. That's directly related to what I think envisioning is more than just coming up with an acreage count. And I think that the way you manage growth within the community is really a function of what the community as a whole wants, what they can envision. I know that you just mentioned density. In some neighborhoods, that probably works great, but we've actually talked with some neighborhoods where they're very leery of the notion of increasing density because of the impact on the character of the neighborhood. And right now, we don't have answers to those until we get a sense of what the community's doing. So, I'm encouraged by this as an incremental step, establishing some baseline, but I'm confident that those baselines will continue to be adapted as we learn more about which color, what size, how many cup holders we want in our city.
So, before I go to Mike for the second round, anybody else in the first round? Comment?
The employment and unemployment that Mike was talking about, don't we get, we get to the unemployment, we get to the employment numbers based on the population forecast, right? So, it's a function of how many people we have, and therefore, a measure that creates the number of jobs that we need, and therefore, how many acres of land we need to house those jobs?
Correct.
So, we don't, per se, look at the unemployment rate? It's kind of implicit in that calculation?
And we did adjust.
Do we know what that unemployment rate?
I don't know. But I know that we adjusted the base employment, the number of current jobs that we had in the community. We adjusted it downward to be more current. We had first gathered that data in early '08, and then adjusted it again last year to account for our base being lower because of the jobs that had been lost.
Right. Which is probably pretty accurate, since the bottom of the recession was probably late last year, or fall.
Okay.
And then, so I guess part of the solar manufacturing brings up an interesting point because we do have HyNeX, which would be a good thing to reuse at first. And I guess when we get into the Envision Eugene, it's, to use the waste management analogy, which somehow seems appropriate here, is reduce, reuse, recycle. And so, I think when we get to that, the policies in Envision Eugene, I think that's not a bad way to think about how we use our land as well. First, we want to reduce the amount we need to use, and we want to reuse the stuff that we already have, and then use new vacant.
Thank you. Betty?
Are you thinking of replacing the growth management policies as a part of Envision Eugene?
I'll let Lisa answer that.
I think that there's certainly going to be the opportunity to add new policies that would change sort of our land use efficiencies or the way that we're using land. So, not that we're specifically including in our scope, looking at modifying the growth management policies, but I can imagine that there will be new policies introduced as part of that, excuse me, as part of that land use efficiency. And we'll be talking with you more about that in the next month.
Okay. But you're not thinking of an operation as big as what created growth management?
We're not tackling that as specifically a scope, a discrete scope of work. Looking at new policies will be part of what we do, bringing to the council sort of a range of scenarios to handle needing the land need. And new policies may be needed to reduce the need to expand the urban growth boundary, for example. Or new policies around economic development and how we assemble industrial land.
I guess to say no, the scope does not include rewriting the growth management policies or going through a big process with the end in mind of having a new set of growth management policies. Some of those may change as a result of the conversations that occur, because you may choose to set new policies based on how we're going to meet the need.
I think we should be very careful about replacing those policies, which were the result of so much community involvement, but not that we don't ignore them all the time. And the area of employment, I wonder if there was consideration of the trend toward people working from home. There is, you may not need land for lots of types of jobs. And did you, was that considered?
Yes, we did consider that. One of those key assumptions that's inherent in the land need is the percentage of employment that you will meet through, basically on non-employment lands, which is working from home. And so, we had a good discussion at the committee about that. We had one of our committee members brought in some new data, actually, on trends in working from home. And so, the value that was established for that percentage was based on that, and the fact that that trend is actually increasing. So, that does result in less land needed.
I know people who are moving here who work with their computers. They still work some other place, but it's not, they don't need land, extra land for Commercial lands, when you talk about needing that, I don't understand, well, there is so much vacant commercial land right now, and underutilized commercial land all over the place. And was all that considered? Did you talk about how much land is currently unused?
We talked about how much is.
Or rent and so forth?
We certainly talked about how much is unused, as in vacant commercial land. And we actually have 98 acres of vacant commercial land. And a lot of that is in smaller sizes. And so, when our, the folks on our committee who work in the commercial sector and commercial real estate came in saying, boy, we have trouble finding sites for potential commercial businesses, and that was borne out by the data that we found on vacant land. Now, we didn't do an extensive analysis of underutilized land in terms of commercial, simply because that's a little bit more of a subjective assessment. But we do allow for the fact that we will see a certain redevelopment rate on currently developed commercial lands, and that cities typically do meet some of their commercial land need through redevelopment of those lands. And so, that expectation has already been built in to this land need.
I think we should keep in mind all the time the reuse, redevelop, and so forth that Alan mentioned. I do like the corrected motion more than, better than the other motion. Because the first motion said, use this as a basis for the work, and I'm willing to say, for use in the process. But we also need to change something on the second page of the ordinance where it says "basis" again. Thank you.
Andrea?
Thank you. Thank you for all the work. I know I've been to a couple of listening circles, and you guys are putting in a lot of hours on trying to make sure that the community is as involved as possible, and I really appreciate that. I just had a quick question about the railroad yard. Was that at all considered? I mean, that's 360 acres. It's shrinking in its size of what they do there. So, I didn't know if any of that part of it was, if you, if anybody talked to them, or is that a part of the plan? Because I know that there's urban legends out there, you know, of different things that they're going to do with some of that property.
We considered that very early on and contacted, I think it's Union Pacific, to ask them about their plans for that site. And as, similar to how we approached, let's say, like, school district surplus sites, we needed to be able to say with some degree of certainty whether or not lands would be available or not. And Union Pacific's response to us was that they could not make any kind of an assurance over a 20-year period that those lands would conclusively be available. So, they're currently listed as, I think, committed lands, lands that we know are committed to another use, rail yard use over the period of time. So, if something were to happen on those lands in our planning period in the next 20 years, that would be in excess of what we planned for. That would be land that we're not currently showing as available for development.
So, just to, for instance, in my mind, when there was, when it was a more functioning railroad yard, they actually had a motel, and they had a restaurant there, and that wasn't considered part of, so if they were to do something similar to that, where they did their own, like, little enterprise zone, where they created their own businesses on their footprint that were UPE businesses, that wouldn't be included in any of this?
I believe that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else in the first round? All right. Second round, Mike?
Let's skip to the end of the page on the drainage way thing.
Thank you.
Yeah. I can make a motion, which Emily is wonderfully, or an amendment here, which adds the CAC findings in Attachment B as a part of the motion on just these issues of concern, so that we make sure to address them the right way. But the way that drainage way findings from the CAC is written, it says, if and when Public Works finishes, then we'll include that, and we'll take that into account. But here's the challenge, if they don't ever finish it in time, then it won't ever be a part of taking into account that we can't build on all of the land that is vacant at this time. And that's really important to those folks. One of the challenges for me with it is that, unless I misunderstand this, there's already a definition in the manual, and I have it here, but the challenge is, once you do have the definition and the administrative stuff is done, then you need a map, right?
I'll let Emily respond. I think she's ready to, or you want?
Sure. And Jason hit it on the head when he explained this. Recall that anytime we bring a land use action in front of you, particularly a Metro Plan designation change, we include findings, particularly under Goal 10, which is your concern, housing, Mike, where we tell you how much land we have on our inventory that's going to be rendered unbuildable by this particular regulation, and we debit that from your supply. And if, so if this, if the rules go in place after we take action on Envision Eugene, just as any other time.
Move the UGB at that time?
Well, potentially, unless you find another way to make up for the land that you debit. We always have a running tally of the buildable land. What we set aside for that purpose has to be there, and if we take that up because we protect it in one way, we've got to find that capacity in another place. And that's state law, and that will always continue. So, if it happens before you adopt Envision Eugene, you'll have to deal with it as part of Envision Eugene. If it happens after you do, you'll have to deal with it upon, the city will have to deal with it upon adoption of those rules.
Okay. Well, I hope that the rest of the council will consider the amendment that I'll make that'll take some of these things into consideration that were put forward to us from all the work of the CAC. The last piece, though, for me, is transportation. And with this one, I actually, I disagree with the findings portion of the CAC, and that's where I'm in Attachment B, and so, that's where I.
Page in the paragraph?
I'm sorry. For this particularly, I'm talking about page four of Attachment B, item seven, where it says, "Traffic Impact Analysis." In the CAC recommendations under point two, where it says, "Given the densities assumed in ECLA, it's likely these densities can be achieved even with the potential limiting factor of compliance with local and state transportation planning rules." I actually don't agree with that, and I think you can find that pretty clearly. I asked Mark Schonin and Kurt Corey to give me an assessment from ODOT from two years ago of belt line. And it shows that according to the standards that are used for constructing those kind of facilities, the belt line is, in almost every exception, a failing facility in terms of its capacity to handle volume and have any excess above capacity. And that was two years ago. So, with very little to no excess capacity for transportation on the belt line, how can you develop any vacant lands in that particular part of North Eugene where most of this is going to take place, when there's no room for allowance for transportation? And the specific example I would use would be the 23 acres on Good Pasture. Now, they were going to put a residential facility there, and they said, no, you can only put 10% of the units there, and you've got to build a bridge over the delta in order to use existing standards. So, how can what we're saying are existing standards comply when obviously it didn't there?
The transportation is a really complex issue, and it's always a moving target in terms of the development application that is, you know, ripe at the moment for that. I can tell you that we sat down with the small group based on work from Public Works Transportation and created a map of all these areas that might potentially be transportation limited. And then, we looked at how much developable land do we have in those areas? And the product of that was that there weren't that, there weren't that many developable acres remaining in those areas. Now, does it mean that there might not be areas outside of that or in adjacent areas of the UGB that we might need to expand into that could have an issue? No, it doesn't mean that. Because if we were to change any of our plan designations as part of Envision Eugene, or if we need to expand the urban growth boundary, we would have to make very specific findings saying, we can ensure that the transportation infrastructure needed will be in place at some point in time over that 20-year period. We have to make findings saying that. So, this, ECLA is saying, given the densities that we've seen, which relative to what plan designations allow, isn't always that high. Take, for example, medium-density residential allows for 10 to 20 units per acre. ECLA, I think, assumes 11 or 12 units per acre, because typically, we see the bottom end of that. So, that's not something that's as difficult to meet. Now, if we had, if we were going to assume 15, 16 units per acre in there, that would be something different than ECLA, and it may need transportation, we may need to make transportation findings that we need different infrastructure than what we have now.
If we want to be more dense.
Right. So, that's where the changing policies part comes in, that if we want to change our, if we want to change our assumptions or our policies, we have to prove up what that means for things like transportation or other infrastructure, and say, we will be able to serve these areas in the 20-year horizon.
Or in reverse, we won't be able to do that density unless we have the transportation. Yes, thank you.
Alan?
I'm trying to get my hands around, mind around what this ECLA study means, and I keep going back to my training as an energy planner, and when we used to do the rural, ruler mentality, ruler forecasting. We said, we were here, now we're here, so that means we're going to be here. The only thing we knew about that point was that it's going to be wrong.
Yeah, right.
And so, we don't want to mill the plan on that. What we decided was, well, let's get some reasonable assumptions around that, and our sort of the jaws of uncertainty comes in and says, we've got a high and a low around there. We know that we're not, pretty sure we're not going to just be there. So, it's going to be somewhere in between the jaws of uncertainty, the high and low forecast, and, which is why this study doesn't say, that's the number. And which is why we're also going to look at scenarios coming up. And which is why we're also going to look at scenarios coming up in, in Envision Eugene. And, and what I get stuck on a lot is that we don't want to make 20-year irrevocable decisions based on that point. What we want is a plan that's flexible enough so that we can adjust it over time so that, that we can react to that. And, and that would mean frequent reviews coming back and making sure where we are and have triggers that would say, okay, we need to be over here, we need to be over there. Because at day one, when we adopt this plan, we don't need 20 years of housing, for instance, on that first year. We need it over 20 years. But exactly where we're going to be, maybe more, maybe less. So I'm pushing for seeing a plan that has some flexibility, been built into it with some triggers. I think that might stretch where we've been as a state, but I think it's the right thing to do because we're talking about old 1970s thinking about this, which doesn't make any sense anymore. And in that are those efficiency measures, the policies that we have to, efficiency measures needs a new name. Nobody knows what efficiency members, I don't know what we should call them, but maybe it's the policies that we adopt that change the, the forecast. And the assumptions can vary, you know, number of people that work at home or the number of single-family homes that we have has been declining and whether or not we're going to have that over 20 years. So that's where those scenarios come in for me. The question I have is related to all of the issues that were punted to Envision Eugene. There's, the waterways issues is one, but there's 14 of them, 13 more. And, and I know that we've got this February deadline, which is really driven by folks who want to make sure that they can involve the legislature in this should we go awry at this process. But when we come back next, next week on the 26th, I would, or 28th, and talk about Envision Eugene, I'd really like to look, have you look at, of all these issues, what's going to, what would we be able to do and how much of it would we be able to do within that February timeframe?
Next round.
And if we were going to do it fully, do it right, what wouldn't be included? How long would it take?
I just want to mention, we had some conversation around that. We're going to bump that work session a couple of weeks because we need to have some time to put some of that information together to bring back to this body. So it's not going to be next week is that work session. So it will be bumped a couple of weeks.
Alan, do you need another round?
Yeah, unless you give me 10 seconds.
I'll give you another round. Chris?
Yeah, I'm very appreciative of the, of all the comments that are being made in their, in their thoughtfulness. And I, I like the idea of the flexibility that scenario planning affords, the ability to kind of be thoughtful with what would, what could a future look like. The trade-off for that, though, which I don't have the answer to, is the degree to which you're bound into what may be old-fashioned thinking at a state or a federal level, but it's still the thinking that's in place. And so I know that we can do visioning and we can, we can have flexibility and I think we can kind of operate with that as our own body and try to incorporate that as much as possible because I like that. But at some point, don't we have to submit a number? Some kind of number?
We do.
And it has to be our best guess. And we, and so what I'm guess, I'm looking for is, if we're still obligated to provide a number and we like the idea of being flexible on that number, can you kind of let me know what, what is our best of both worlds where we have to submit a number, but we can ensure that we still have some flexibility within that as our needs, our interests and our things change? If that's what you're proposing, that's great. But you might let me know, what, what is the state's ability to be flexible on the numbers we, we submit?
I think the biggest piece of flexibility afforded by the state would be essentially the periodic review process, which is that a city does need to adopt a new UGB based on a single land need number. However, that periodic review process is the opportunity for a community to review that, where they, what their progress has been and if that's been seven years, and whether or not you feel you're on the track that you were on. And I think metro area cities have, in their regulations, to revisit every five years. They've gone ahead and done that on their own. So I think that the state needs you, they require us to plan in that way. And then it rests on the communities to decide at what frequency they might want to review their buildable land studies to determine, you know, if you want to be on a different course or if things haven't gone the way you thought they would go because, you know, we're right, we are going to be 100, or we're wrong, we're going to be 100% wrong on this over a 20-year period. So it's, it's, would be incumbent upon a community to decide how much flexibility you want to revisit those numbers.
So part of what we ought to be thoughtful about is what's our interest in revisiting and refining these numbers? And it may not be a requirement that the state has as much as it is what we want in terms of being able to say, let's check out on these numbers periodically to see if our assumptions are still holding true.
I think that discussion would be something that could occur as you're coming to completion on Envision Eugene.
Okay. That's good. Okay. I'm done.
The only other question I have, too, is about things that we said we were going to do in the past to meet the goals we had before that we haven't actually done. And, and is that going to be part of the conversation? For instance, I, the one I can think about is, I can remember six, five years ago when we talked about that we, one of our plans was to really try to address whether we were using the industrial property in West Eugene or is that what it's, the, it's not, maybe it's not industrial, it's a-
The enterprise zone?
No, I don't mean far as, as the enterprise zone. I mean in the, near the post office area with all that, that business area. And that the, what we had talked about was that it, whether it was efficiently being used to, to meet the needs of the community and that we would look at it and try to make, move in the direction of it being used more fully for, for the needs of the community. And I don't think we've done anything about that. So those kind of things that we set out in front of us in the past to meet our community goals and whether we've actually moved in that direction or not seems to be something that should be feeding into this process.
Okay. Mike?
Two quick things and then finish transportation. One, you mentioned periodic review, but we really didn't do that in the same sort of way as everyone else last time and we ended up with 14 years. And so, and that's because we were grandfathered. So I'm wondering, after we do this compliance piece, do we now, are we compelled to do it every seven years now? Are we still grandfathered and don't really have to?
I'm going to let Emily get that one.
We're not grandfathered. State law and administrative rules tell us how often it's supposed to happen, but the department is overwhelmed and doesn't necessarily make jurisdictions do it that way. I think the point made is that you all can choose to set your own trigger points.
We can say.
So we're not compelled, but we can. Last question and then the transportation piece. Who's overall accountable for this whole process and in charge? I, I know that there's work that goes on a planning, there's work that we talked about at Public Works with the drainage ways, there's parks related work. But who's in overall charge of making sure that we comply and who's accountable for meeting the February deadline?
I think the city manager just pointed to me.
I am ultimately, but it's Lisa's project, so.
So you're essentially kind of like the, I hate this word, but you're the czar for the whole project here.
I'm a big fan of that word.
Zarena, sorry. Is that true?
Zarena.
Is that true?
I would be the, yes.
Okay. Back to the transportation piece. My concern is that the, I'd like to just make this motion that Emily provided, or this amendment that puts the CAC findings into this so that they can keep working on those pieces. But I fundamentally disagree that we have capacity with what we have right now to be able to redevelop the lands we're saying are developable. And so I, I want to put this in there and be reasonable, but I want us to address that as we go because we really, I don't think we've done a good job of, of analyzing that to know whether or not we can in fact do the development we're assuming with redevelopable and vacant lands, especially in North and West Eugene. Any suggestions on how to address that?
Well, why don't we ask staff if they have some to do?
That's what I'm saying.
I, I think part of it is the rigor of the analysis that you want to undertake to do that.
Yeah.
Because in our, you know, we're, we're taking this 3,000-foot planning view of what is the scope of the transportation issues we might have and how they might inhibit development. And so it doesn't allow us to sit down and look at every parcel that's developable and say, what do we think might get approved here? Because it's so site-specific and application-specific. And the one application this year might get approved and then densities or whatnot might be changed and it might be different. And so that's the part where the level of detail and the speculation around particular applications makes it difficult to say, yeah, these lands are, could be developed or these lands couldn't. And so we've tried to take it at this level and say, in general, we think that these densities can be achieved. It doesn't mean that there, I mean, certainly there's always room for that extra piece. The question is, what's the, the time and perhaps dollar-figure investment that goes into being how, as sure as we might want to be on that issue?
I feel, if I could, I, I feel like I've been heard on this and it's in the record so it'll get studied appropriately and getting included appropriately. But I just want to say with this and the other issues I brought up, my real point here is, we fight too darn much in this community over this stuff after we adopt a plan to move forward. Then we end up in, in fighting over the details of how that applies. And we end up, in, in my opinion, unfortunate and senseless fights about how some of these regulations apply where if we were doing the job upfront to say, to make it a lot clearer about our assumptions of what's developable and what isn't, what complies with the rules and what doesn't, we end up in a better place with an easier opportunity to move forward later. And that's the reason for the rigor of my questions, is to make sure that we get something that we don't have to fight about so much later. So I'm hoping that the rest of this process helps amplify that, too, so that at the end of the day, we don't have ongoing court battles over this sort of stuff and we can work together well. And when it comes to this, I'll, I'll make the motion first and then add this after the fact, if you'd, if you'd allow me.
Sure. And I, I have Alan, first Lisa wanted to say something, you're done? Okay. So Alan has 10 seconds worth of comments.
Set. Yeah, give him 10.
There it's halfway gone.
It's gone.
So where I was going before was that we have lots of issues that got punted to Envision Eugene and Attachment C. There's the waterways plus the 12. And I'm grateful to hear that you're going to take some time to look at that. Because it looks like there's too much here to get this done in the timeframe that we have. So I'm really looking at what's going to be included and what not in that February timeframe and, and more specifically at what level, which is probably why you're taking more time because that's probably the tricky part. I mean, we could include them all and cover them all very cursorily or we could deal with some of them in more depth. I mean, Mike has his issues, I got mine, residential redevelopment rates and housing density and types are some of the issues I'd like to go into more depth. So the, the CAC made pages and pages of recommendations to us and I assume that all of them are going to be studied to some degree or not, or to some degree or not. And, and included in Envision Eugene, I would encourage us to wait for that analysis that staffs could bring back, which will show us what's going to be in there and at what level. And then, and, and if we don't like that, then we can give them further direction. So at this point, I'm assuming that all of it's going to be there, but more some than others. And, but I think they need more time to think about that. And so I don't know why I would pick out, you know, those two that you brought up as opposed to the other 12 that are in here to point out, to bring back. So I'm glad they're asking for more time to study that because I think that's an important issue. So I would just be fine with supporting the, the motion as it's been put forth here.
We do 20 seconds. Andrea?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I was listening to Mike and he, you know, he spoke about the issues around Santa Clara and I know it's about protecting what the Santa Clara community holds, you know, very near and dear to them. And, you know, then he made a comment about which area we're going to grow and then you lost me. Because I don't assume that we're going to grow in any certain direction. And when I've talked to staff, my interpretation of what, what we're doing here isn't to assume that we are going to change the urban growth boundary or that we are going to grow in whatever areas that would lead us to think that that would be the natural place. And it kind of took me down the bunny trail of, you know, Santa Clara. So there's people there who really hold the farmlands dear. And I don't know, I don't think that that's in this, you know, that's not a part of this equation because that's on the other side of the urban growth boundary, which is fine. But I think about all the farms and stuff that are out there, which you would assume that would be the area that you would look at to say, this is open space, this is clean ground, this would be perfect for families to have parks and stuff. But there's, but to me, that, the fact that that's not in here is, is actually good because I don't want to be pre-directed to say what area is going to be, if we're going to go down the bunny trail of, of changing the urban growth boundary, what direction we're going to go in. Because there's four sides to this community and it could be in any direction, if at all. So I hope, Mike, whatever you're proposing to do, I want to support you and if you're not going to do it, that's cool. But, you know, I was thinking about that because I, because that was my interpretation of the conversations that I've had with staff when we've had one-to-ones, that there's not an assumption that we're going to go in any direction. And so, and I appreciate that because I was kind of at the other place and then when I thought about it, it makes more sense to do it this way because I know that that probably, and I, and I heard what you said, Mike, about, you know, that's when the community gets into these, you know, tug-of-rocks or tug-of-wars? Tug-of-wars. With ropes. Because, because, you know, there's different philosophies at either end of it. And so, yeah. So I just wanted to share that, my thoughts with you, Mike. Thanks.
I'm going to ask Mike to put the motion on the table. And I guess the only comment I want to make is, I think we very carefully not, what we're trying to talk about is what the future is of, of our community. And we're going to try to have that conversation without getting to the end before we get started. So that's, that's the careful line here. And there are people who are amongst us who are predisposed to no expansion and some who are predisposed to expansion. But we're going to, what we're going to try to do is look at what we want to accomplish and see the best way to do it and try to have a different and new conversation that's very inclusive of the community and all the interests that are out there. And it's a big, huge journey. And, but I think it's an important one. So George, you want to say something?
I just want to say something quickly before Mike makes that motion is, I like the, I'm going to vote for this, of course. I like the corrected motion. It's, it's, it's more, you know, precise and it uses a precise language from the CAC. So I, along with, which I also appreciate a lot. So I mean, but I think we also need to change the language in the, the actual resolution itself on page two, to where it says, as the basis for its work in the Envision Eugene project, substitute that for, for use in Eugene. Envision Eugene project, just like it says in the resolution.
And Betty has an amendment to do that.
Oh, I see.
Okay. So, Mike, you want to put motion on the table?
I'll put the motion on the table and like to speak to it after I do. Move to adopt Resolution 5004 that accepts the Eugene Comprehensive Lands Assessment Executive Summary and direct city staff to use the estimates and data documented in the executive summary in the Envision Eugene project.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
You want to say something?
Yeah, I wanted to just first say to Andrea that I wasn't assuming growth of any kind. What I was saying is, the point of all this is, we have to plan for building 15,000 new dwelling units. So we have to either do it more densely or we have to do it over a larger footprint. And that's what the, the process of Eugene and Vision, Envision Eugene is about, is which one of those more than the other will we do? And these pieces are, well, what constrains us in order to do that? And I want to make sure that we protect some things that are important, like the drainage ways in Santa Clara, in the process. And it affects some of those decisions, but I'm not predisposed to whichever one the end of the road is. My amendment takes, that I want to make next, takes into account the idea that this takes the basic data, but it, unless I misunderstood, it doesn't take the specific recommendations in Attachment B into consideration, like Alan spoke to, for further consideration? Or do I have that wrong? Does the resolution take the Attachment B recommendations of the Citizens Committee and say, we have to continue on the path of those recommendations?
Emily's already up.
That's right. You're right. And I think that the point that you heard Councilor Zalanka making is that there will be a future work session very soon where you will be presented with the scope of work for the next steps and asked to comment and pass motions on that.
But the motion that I just put on the table, does it take into account?
No, it doesn't. It doesn't, it doesn't discuss what will be included in the next steps, except that it will utilize the numbers in the executive summary.
Okay. And the executive summary, not the recommendations of the Citizens Committee.
That's right.
Okay. So I'd like to adopt or amend the motion to include in the Envision Eugene project the CAC's recommendations and rather than related to just a few fields, leave it at that, as described in Attachment B to today's council package.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded, yes.
Just with the understanding that when we do come back, that may be changed a little bit based on what that conversation is, right? This is the...
But that's, what this says is, take into account and use those, those Citizen Committee recommendations as a process.
Figure out how to do it.
Okay, we'll vote on the amendment proposal.
When can I make?
And then you'll be you.
Okay.
You'll be, you'll be next.
Okay.
All right, all those in favor of the amendment, please indicate. Eight in favor, none in opposition, it passes, so we'd have the amended motion on the table. And then you want to offer a different one?
Yes, I move to amend to strike the words, "As a basis for its work," from section one of the resolution.
And replace it with...
And, and replace...
Strike.
You want to replace it with this language, right? Yes?
It doesn't require any replacement. By striking those words, it matches your motion precisely.
It's a strike.
Moved and seconded, okay. All those in favor of that amendment, please indicate. Eight in favor and none in opposition, so now the motion's on the table as amended. All those in favor, please indicate. Eight in favor and none in opposition, it passes. So that's good, great, thank you. Got the, okay.
I weren't expecting that, were you?
That's good. All right, thank you all very much. That ends our business for today.